The zoning board for the town of Carver. Carver Zoning Board of Appeals, meeting for October 30th, 2018. We are in Carver Town Hall Room Number One this evening. I think in view of the fact that we are coming on to an election within the next week, it would be appropriate for us to all pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and please remember to vote next Tuesday, an important election. I'd like to welcome again, as is customary, Area 58, who is present and doing an important public service by televising these meetings so that everybody in the town knows what its boards and committees are up to. This evening, we have a full membership here. To my far left, in the white blazer, is Fran Mello, our newest permanent member of the board. Next to her is Eric Mueller. To my immediate right is Sharon Clark, and over to her right is James Nowin. My name is Stephen Gray. I'm the chairman of this committee, and we welcome everybody who is here this evening. The first order of business is to hopefully approve some minutes. So with regard to the minutes of October 16, 2018, which was our last meeting from two weeks ago, I have taken the occasion of distributing those minutes to the board members in advance of tonight's meeting so we can expedite this process for tonight. And does anyone have anything they'd like to add, or subtract, or modify, or amend with regard to these minutes concerning our meeting of October 16? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve minutes as written.
Do I hear a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So those meeting minutes as written pertaining to the date of October 16, 2018, are approved. We also have some executive session minute meeting minutes to approve. These are for dates July 11, 2018, and September 11, 2018. I have also distributed these to board members as everyone received these and had an opportunity to review them. Does anyone have any objection to making these executive session meeting minutes public at this time?
Yep.
Does anyone have any suggestions with regard to additions, subtractions, amendments, or modifications that they'd like to make? Everybody is answering in the negative, so I ask for a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to accept the executive minutes as written.
For the dates of July 11 and September 11, 2018?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So those meeting minutes now are public and part of the record, together with the meeting minutes of October 16 that we just approved. We have two continued cases from that meeting of October 16 that I referenced, and we have started a little bit earlier tonight to accommodate people for these continued cases because we have three new cases coming in at 7:00. So we'll try to get through both of these before 7:00 so that you can all go home and have dinner. The first of these is case number 34-1. The petitioner, Davenport Building Company, 20 North Main Street, South Yarmouth. The petitioner is requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 14 Andrews Point Road in Carver, Assessors Map 1-Lot 8, to demolish and reconstruct a new home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot on a residential agricultural district. Now, based on testimony received on the 16th, it appears as if the argument of the petitioner has changed since council has been represented, or council has been retained, and now we have the argument being made to us that there is no need for any zoning relief here whatsoever. So I don't think that you folks are pursuing a special permit any longer.
Correct.
But rather, you are suggesting to us that we have no jurisdiction over this case because no relief is necessary.
Correct.
And that is Mr. Cirque, who is responding to me, who is counsel for the petitioner. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. I'd like to make part of the record now a letter that came in from Town Council KP Law very late this afternoon, and I would like Mr. Cirque to approach so that I can give him a copy of this letter. Thank you, and I'll give you a moment, Mr. Cirque, to review that letter while I ask the board members if they have had an opportunity sufficient to review that letter themselves. It's basically a one-page letter, and for those watching at home, as well as those who are attending tonight, this letter makes the argument that there really is, in Town Council's opinion, no need for zoning relief in this case because under Section 2254 of the bylaw, it appears this project does not appear to need any relief whatsoever under the zoning bylaws, that it's allowed by right, as we say. And there is case law on point with regard to an issue that we discussed the last time up here, which is whether the moving of this proposed property from its, or the proposed project from the current footprint to a different footprint would fall outside the meaning of the word reconstruction, which is used under bylaw 2254. And again, according to the opinion of Town Council, the reconstruction of a non-conforming single and/or two-family residential structure may include the replacement of the structure on a different location on the subject property. I think it was Member Mello who raised a very good point with regard to the meaning of that word reconstruction, and that now has been answered by Town Council. I have a question, though, of the petitioner this evening.
Yes, sir.
And that is, I would like to know if there has been any conversation between your client and the neighbors with regard to privacy concerns that were raised at the last two public hearings on this case?
Yes, there have, and would you like to know what was said?
I think all the board members would like to know.
I'm going to have Mr. Merritt come up, because he was a party to them, I wasn't. This is Jeffrey Merritt, who is a co-owner of the subject property.
Mr. Merritt. 14 Andrews Point Road, Jeff Merritt. Did have a conversation with the Bennys. In the conversation, we started to talk about the fence that was referenced beginning of October, whatever those couple of meetings were. And that conversation really led to, the fence wasn't all that important to them. It was more the overall construction and what we could and could not do with the property, the value of the property, and some other references with respect to that. So we had the conversation, didn't make a lot of headway with it, but nonetheless, we did approach and try to have that conversation. We had the conversation with Capirella's, Lisa and John, and I remember on the 16th meeting, they had passed some orders of conditions, I don't know if there's a better term for that, orders of conditions to the board. We did go through some of those, and actually, some of them were pretty reasonable. So in that respect, there was some additional staking that we would have, the surveys due to clarify the lot line on that side of the property where their house actually exists, so that, you know, if we're approved through the construction and all that, that we would actually keep it clean, we'd know where that property line was. And also, I think one of the line items in there was making sure that when construction was over, that we would go through and making sure that all the nails were picked up with a magnetic roller of some sort, so that we weren't living with that for year on year, right? There were other terms within that that we just weren't prepared to answer at that point, but we did say that we would, you know, keep moving down that road and keep looking at those and addressing them as we can. So that was really the two conversations we had with both of the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt.
Okay.
Anything further that the petitioner would like to add at this time?
No. I do have a letter with me that, and I'll read it to you. It says, "It is my understanding that by separate cover, Building Commissioner Robert Francis has advised you that after consulting with Town Council, he has confirmed that the applicant is entitled to a building permit as a matter of right in this case. According to the applicant, hereby withdraws his application for a special permit." And I also submitted via Mr. Cole a letter over the signature and seal of Joseph Webby confirming the contents of the zoning setback and lot coverage table, which was a matter that had been raised initially by Mr. Francis, just to confirm that no nonconformities were being increased.
Do you have a copy of the revised plan with you, Mr. Cirque?
I do.
That would need to be made part of the record.
Oh, you have the plan?
Oh, you know what? I was thinking Mr. Webby's letter. I do have that one, but I don't have this one. So we'll make this part of the record as well.
So you have Webby's letter?
I do have Webby's letter, yes. I must tell you that my vision with these glasses is pretty good, but I can't read this.
Yeah. This is the Reader's Digest version. Okay. I think it's at the bottom.
Along the side. Is this the only copy you have tonight, Forrest?
That's the only full-size copy.
When we start down on the left, my left hasn't passed around. Anything further, Mr. Cirque?
Nothing.
All right. If you could withdraw, we're going to ask for public comment at this point. Thank you. Does anyone like, would they like to come up and address the board? I see some people answering in the affirmative. So we'll start with a young lady.
Do I?
If you would, and just give your name and address, and take your time, and let us know what's on your mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Zarba. I live in Rentham, Mass.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Z-A-R-B-A.
Okay. And the address again is?
Rentham, Massachusetts.
Okay.
And we live in, well, we have our cottage at 12 Andrews Point Road, right next to the Merits. I want to address the board and ask you to consider these things that I'm going to talk about today, which is, we have owned our place. My dad bought it in 1975, and we've been there since, so we've been in that spot for about 45 years now, and the whole spot has remained unchanged. Andrews Point Road has kind of remained unchanged since we bought the place. It's a nice little, our two cottages, our setback, kind of like a dead end. It's a nice little area. It's very private, very quiet. I'm not opposed to them making improvements, but when you look at the house that they're in today, which is approximately, I think, 1,000 square feet, and they're proposing something closer to 3,000 square feet, you're talking about almost a full-size home in less, in a little over a quarter of an acre of a lot. We're in a lot size of less than a quarter of an acre. It's beautiful, it's private, it's pretty, it's, my kids love it, our kids, you know, I'd like to have it for generations to come, but I don't want to be next to a home that's proportionally out of size with our house. And actually, the style and the character of the neighborhood, it's, you know, like I said, it's a great, it's a great spot. So me personally, I think the house is too large for the area, for the land, and I think it's just, it's, it's out of touch with, with what that property is made of, characteristically.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Have you had a conversation with Mr. Merritt about your concern?
We did. When we met with him last week, we told him that we thought the house was too large for the lot size. And quite honestly, they're going from 35-feet-wide house to a 34-foot-wide house. That's going to put their house a foot closer, in theory, to our house. Today, we maybe have, from house to house, maybe 20 feet. We're close, and we've been that way for a long time. And I've never, we've, you know, had different neighbors, the Fess's have lived there since they, since it was built, never had a problem, but I'm concerned about it being wider, closer to our home. Also found out that the proposed porch or deck that they want to put out front is 12 feet wide, as long as the house, you know, 12 feet wa, or 12 feet, yeah, 12 feet wide by 34 feet long. It's huge. It just, it's going to, it just is going to take away the character of that area. I'm concerned about noise and just, and the privacy. It's a beautiful spot, and I don't want to see it ruined. We've been there too long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merritt, I observe that you're listening intently.
I am.
Who else would like to be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Bennie, B-E-N-N-I-E, 22 Lakeview Street. My wife and I are the Butters on the east side of the Merritt property.
What would you like to tell us, Mr. Bennie?
I understand and heard what you said about, I guess, the decision that the building inspector made, so this may be moot, but I would like to express what I think is an injustice to our neighborhood. The first page that you're looking at is right off the assessor's plot card. This is this property at the time they bought this property. It's a 12-foot-high structure, okay, right on the edge of the pond, right next to another 12-foot-high structure that are cottages, they're summer cottages. On the second page is the floor plan, again, directly from the builder's plot card of what that building looks like. And what's marked in yellow is a six-foot-high fence that's on the edge of the deck that is four feet from my property line. That deck provides privacy for both parties, and always has, and it was part of the agreement between my father-in-law, who has passed, and the Fess's, who own that property, that they wouldn't be bothered by the deck being that close if that fence was on the deck, which provided us both privacy. Okay? On the third page, from Google Maps, the white line is my property line. The building to the left of that is the property we're talking about, and right next to that is the Capirella property. As you can see, it's right up on the property line. My wife and I own a 25-foot-wide, 165-foot-long access to the beach. Our property is on Lakeview Street. We have approximately two acres. Okay? This area here has been very wooded, very country, for 70 years. The property to the right of that is the Bryden House. It was built in the '30s. So all three of these houses are over 70 years old. This neighborhood has not been modified or changed in 70 years. On the next page is the house from the pond side that they intend to build. Instead of being 12 feet high, it's 30.5 feet, it's three floors. It has a deck fully across the front, and it abuts close to the property lines on both sides. Where before their house was invisible from our side, there is no longer a fence, and even if there was a fence, that deck is 12 feet in the air. So even if we ask for a six-foot fence, it wouldn't make a difference, because they are right at the property line at 15 feet, and from their deck, they're looking down on what used to be private. Okay? The next page is the side of their building that abuts our property line. There's a deck that runs the full length of that buil, full length of the building. Before, there used to be a fence on the edge of the deck. Their life was private, our life was private. Okay? And the next page are the statistics. So it's very difficult to say the impact on the neighborhood, it's subjective. Trying to make that more objective is their current house is 1,024 square feet. Okay? What they're proposing is a 1,258-square-foot first floor, a 425-square-foot second floor, and they walk out with French doors onto the ground level, which is another 1,241 square feet. That's a 286% size house compared to what is there. When we were contacted on October 20th by a text in the morning, okay, we, I had a meeting with my wife with Jeff, and the characterization that Jeff gave of that meeting is not accurate, so I would like to correct that. He came over and he said, "Let's talk about the fence." And my wife and I say, "We need to be a little broader than that. We had no idea that your porch was 10 feet in the air, so a fence is really kind of irrelevant if you can look right over the fence." And the fence would change the character of the neighborhood, because no one else has fences down there. So we attempted to ask him, "Is there anything that you would do to modify your plans?" The answer was, "I'll take my chances with the board." So that wasn't a conversation to make any changes. That was a conversation so that he could say to you he had a conversation with us. We walked away from that conversation, knowing that he wasn't going to do anything.
Anything further you'd like to say?
Now, the first portion of my statistics deal with excluding the porches and the decks from the computation. Currently, his, his house is 1,024, 60% of the total space if you count the deck. There's a very large deck that was added. Now, that deck was added because her father, my father-in-law, okay, were very close to the Fess's, and he didn't mind if it got close to the property line, but they agreed to put a fence up. He's now using that to our detriment by saying that because he has only a four-foot setback, he can keep a four-foot setback from the edge. Now, he's proposing a 15-foot setback. There are things that he could do to minimize the inconvenience and the privacy for us. His house is angled on his lot. His house does not run parallel with the property lines. He's angled it over to look over our beachfront. We feel insulted that he would even do that, that he should face his house directly forward and not angle it. Now, if he was to straighten it out, he wouldn't need a 15-foot setback on each side, he'd probably have a 20-foot setback. So he has angled it like this. So when he sits on his deck, he's overlooking our dock, our boat, and our access to the pond. Okay? The reason that we stand against this is because our life on the pond is being changed.
Thank you. Before you leave us, the conversation that you had with the petitioners, this was not on the 16th, it was on a date after that?
20th, the 20th.
Thank you. Who else would like to be heard? Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gray, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is John Capirella, and I reside at 12 Andrews Point Road, which would be Lot 9, map number one. I'd like to begin with our conversation with Mr. Merritt. It was a very brief conversation, as my sister here stated, you know, primarily, we told him our opinion of the scale of the project and the home and the property location, given the size of the lot and the surroundings, was pretty much out of scale and very large and, not offensive, wouldn't necessarily be the word, but just not, not likable in our viewpoint. Conversation further went, it was very amicable, or cordial, I should say. We asked Mr. Merritt if he would consider any design options, or if he had considered any design options at the time with his developer or construction manager, the Davenport Company, and he had told us no other design options or thoughts were present, presented to him, and that pretty much what Mr. Bennie had mentioned was that he would just simply see what happens tonight and go from there. That was the conversation with Mr. Merritt, and that was this, that was this past Tuesday. The next, the next thing I would like to say, the reasons for my opposing the project the way it's being designed at this current time is many of the same reasons my sister and the Bennys are opposed to it, is simply it's changing the character of the neighborhood. It's a very rural area. It's, excuse me, it's, it's very quiet, as my sister had mentioned. We've been down there for 30, almost 45 years now, and the surroundings, there are small little cottages dotted throughout the entire area, not large homes. Any large home that currently exists there is a home that was built back in the '50s, '60s, when there was very lenient, very lenient building codes and restrictions to build properties of that size today. Third thing I would like to demonstrate, try to demonstrate to the board is the scale of the project as it relates to the overall property line, and if you refer to the graphics that I just gave to you, you can see the side elevation that I'm showing here right now is their proposed side. Sorry, I'm speaking. Yes. You can see the side that I'm showing here is 31,000 cubic feet, let me back up. The side we're looking at here in this, this drawing is the side that's going to face my property, my house. It's approximately 868 square feet in area, as opposed to the existing building shown below, as it faces my property, which is 360 square feet. That's a net increase of 241%. The volume of the house, which I think makes the biggest difference in characterizing the size of it, the existing home is 12,600 cubic feet. The new home is jumping up to 30, over 31,000 cubic feet, which is nearly a 250% increase in volume. They have these very high cathedral ceilings, which raises the roof line, which creates a greater roof height, and that whole side essentially becomes a wall on my property as I approach it.
Anything further that you'd like to tell us?
Well, the next page, just, it's very, just... Uh, well, the next page, uh, just is very, just simply demonstrates the distance of the house from the corner porch to my house. Uh, it's 34 feet, uh, and that's not to the property line, again, that's to the house. So the front porch is very close to my house. Finally, uh, I don't know what the influences of the Town Council's interpretation of the zoning board code is, but I would respectfully like to disagree with, um, that letter, uh, in that, in the back of the zoning code, zoning bylaws, there's clearly a definition of the word reconstruction and reconstruction, uh, that definition reads as follows, "The rebuilding within the existing footprint of the existing structure, part of or the whole existing structure as it sits on the lot." So if you interpolate that definition into Section 2254, it's saying that the non-conforming single-family structure, uh, has to be built on the existing and same spot as to where it was.
Where are you, where are you reading from again? Can you?
Yes, sir. Um, the definitions in the back of the zoning bylaws, there's a definition for reconstruction.
I see it, thank you. Go ahead.
So if we interpolate, um, that definition of reconstruction into the above section, Section 2253, then that would be Item A. And then we go to the exception, "Except as provided by any increase in an existing structural nonconformity." And then the key word is "creation of a new structural nonconformity." I would like to argue that what they are proposing to build is not a reconstruction, but rather a new construction of and creating a new structural nonconformity in a different location than the current one currently exists. And that says, "Should the Board deny a special permit or feel that a special permit is not applicable in this case?" And I would argue that it should be brought up to the Board again as a variance case.
Thank you. Thank you. Who else, if anybody, would like to be heard at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Merritt would like to respond if he'd be given the opportunity.
Be given the opportunity? Come on up.
Jeff Merritt, 14 Andrews Point Road. And, um, just to clarify, um, for myself, the meeting I had with the Bennys, and following this meeting of October 16th, really left the meeting thinking, you know, it was fence, we'd like to get a privacy fence and, and the rest of that, right? But when we actually had the conversation on our deck, um, at 14 Andrews Point Road, it really became something other than a fence. So when we started talking about sizes and changes and all these other things that just started coming up, I'm really not prepared to answer any question like that or commit to anything at that point. So it wasn't just a shut it down, absolutely not. We, we were definitely listening there, but I just didn't know what else to do with it at that point. Um, a couple of other points, you know, I, the existing footprint, I'm, I'm reading what Mr. Benny had provided. I'd say from the existing footprint, you're really increasing that existing footprint by about 200 feet. But I would like to recognize the other piece of this, which is the overall structure between home and deck right now is about 56 feet wide and we're moving that down to about 41 feet. So we've already reduced the size of this home in width by quite a bit in order to have it fit better on that lot and we, we did move it a little bit, twisted it so that we could gain those setbacks. And I would like to think that, you know, moving it away from the water, um, you know, further in back of the Caparella's home, actually opens up their view to the water, makes it a little better. So the sidewalls that we're talking about are not where the existing house would be. They're actually moved back. And I'd like to think that some of the other things that we've gone through with the Board of Health, who's written us a letter of recommendation for, um, making a Title V compliant septic now, moving those septic pits away from the water, um, the building inspector who had given us a, um, a positive letter to support this project, and also a conservation that we work with very closely to come up with the plan that we have now after a lot of lake work and concerns. And quite honestly, we're looking at with respect to, it is better for conservation, the environment, um, and anybody that uses that pond recreationally or people that live on that pond because it does move that house further away. I think there are an awful lot of people here, um, who stand to benefit from the project and I just don't want to let their voices get lost in this a little bit, along with some of the other abutters. Not only did we meet with the two abutters here, our neighbors, um, but I've met with the other six as well, actually sat down at their tables, had conversation, and, um, they were all for it. In fact, if you remember from the first meeting, we actually, they got up and spoke in favor of the project. So I just don't want some of that to get lost in this a little bit. Um, that's really what I have to add.
I have, uh, two questions quickly for you.
Sure.
Um, are you planning on living in this house?
Yes, it's some, it's so, we have, right now, I'm getting close.
Are you building to sell?
We are not building to sell, but I wouldn't want to restrict any of my rights. I'm careful, right?
I'm not asking you to restrict anywhere.
I don't know all my rules and all this stuff, but no, the intent here is this is our home.
Okay. And the second question is, the proposed construction, is any part of that on the existing footprint?
Is any part of that on the existing footprint of the, yes, on the exi-- yeah, one, one of the walls, I believe, might probably help me out, but I think the back wall of the new home where it would sit.
That the home or the deck?
Actually, actually goes across where the front of the old house was.
Is it the home or the deck? Does the deck cross or the home?
Home, as far as I recall, the home.
Okay.
Yep, so, all right, thank you.
Thanks, the rest of the room. Just identify yourself for the record.
Michael Williams with Davenport Building Company.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. What do you want to tell us quickly?
There is a section of the house which does cross over the existing house, so it does work within that same footprint.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask the Board members now if they have any questions or comments that they'd like to make with regard to this petition.
Is there going to be any existing vegetation removed on that, those side?
I'm sorry?
Any vegetation going to be taken down on the side?
Yeah, Mr. Merritt, why don't you come back up and sit?
The side lots, any existing vegetation going to be removed, trees?
So there are some small scrub trees, um, that I think will be, have to come out in order to make way for the foundation, but it's very close. But the, um, with the Conservation Commission, we did agree to leave it, this was a big topic that we went through with them, uh, we did agree to leave everything natural. So all said and done, um, no planting of grass because they were worried about phosphates and fertilizers and all of the stuff rolling into the pond. So, uh, we agreed to that, that we would leave it natural.
Ms. Mellow, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
No.
Mr. Mueller, anything further?
Nope.
Vice Chair Clark.
My feeling is that we have a, an opinion from Council, we have a letter from the building commissioner who says they don't need relief from this Board, so I don't feel we have any jurisdiction over this project. Um, you can ask all the questions you want, but we have no decision to make here.
Mr. Now, and, uh, I'm not ignoring, ladies and gentlemen, he's recused himself from this case. So it is the four of us tonight who will be the voting members, should we go to vote. Does any member of the public have a final comment, uh, on any subject that has not yet already been addressed this evening? Because we don't want to cover ground that we've already covered.
I would like the, I would just, they'll be...
Very quick.
I will leave one minute, that's enough. I just would like the Board to really consider the house size that they are planning to build. And if you were living in our house, and the size going from 1,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet, and the house a foot closer to each one of our property lines, is to me unacceptable, uncharacteristic of that property.
Okay.
And the size of the property. I get it that they might be in there every right, it's too big and we would like them to scale down.
What's that big plan?
You know, I appreciate the concerns and I, I've seen the pictures, but I don't believe this Board has any jurisdiction to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down or condition this project in, in any way, shape, or form. Um, there might be another avenue you can take, but it, right now with the petition or, it, it's my view that we don't have jurisdiction.
One final comment that's new? 20 seconds, go. The deck that we're talking about that comes 4 feet from our property line is on the assessor's plot card at 2010. That's eight years ago. The deck was remodeled from a smaller version of a deck 10 years ago. So you told me that it grandfathered in it 10 years.
Assessor plot plans are not legal and are not binding in any way, shape, or form.
But the grandfathering in of a deck that is built without a permit, okay, and is outside of zoning, okay, it would need to be proven that it was over 10 years old.
Again, not our jurisdiction. Again, I mean, it's, it's, we'll take a vote, but it's, it's my opinion that, um, we have, we have a letter from the building commissioner who says at this point that...
I understand.
And, and we can't do anything. We're not a proactive Board. We can't insert ourselves in any case where we have no jurisdiction and this is one of those instances.
I guess to wrap up, I have a couple of comments. The definition of reconstruction that Mr. Caparella raised, um, includes the, um, construction, new construction, uh, within part of the, uh, existing footprint. It doesn't have to be completely within the existing footprint as I read that definition. It says, "The rebuilding within the existing footprint of the existing structure, part of or the whole existing structure." And this was the reason for my question a minute ago to, uh, the builder, as to whether any part of this, uh, proposed project would be within the existing footprint. The answer came back yes, and we see it clearly on the plan here. So just to, to address the definitional issue that Mr. Caparella raised, which I appreciate, thank you for bringing that to our attention. This is a hard case for us. It's hard because obviously, uh, we have a property owner here who has rights to, um, construct within reason and within the existing bylaws in this town. And we also have some heartfelt concerns by neighbors who have, uh, lived, uh, in this neighborhood for a long time and have had predecessors in their families, live in this neighborhood for a long time. The bylaws in the town of Carver, though, give us our footprint. And we can't, uh, given the legal constraints that are on us, we can't step outside that I don't want anybody who has voiced their opposition or their concern about this project thinking, when they leave here today, that we did not hear those concerns. And if you can't hear that in my voice, then you're not really listening to me. But we are, as Ms. Clark pointed out, in appellate board, a quasi-judicial board. We sit tonight as four judges of this case. And what are we judging? We're judging the decision made by the building inspector in this town and the planner in this town, that there is no relief that's required. And so upon review of those bylaws and after having reached out to Town Council for an opinion, it's been made clear to this Board member anyway, that there is, under 2254, an established right for this gentleman to build. Now, before we go to vote, I want to address, Mr. Cirque, with your permission, your client directly. Stay where you are. The conversations that you have begun to have with these neighbors, I know are difficult and are thorny because your rights as a property owner are running up against their concerns as neighbors. And you're going to have to live near these people, right? You want to make peace. You want to satisfy their concerns within reason. So I would strongly suggest that these conversations continue. You may walk out of here tonight with what you want, but you're going to have to live with these people. And you need to think about that. We have a little piece of this for you tonight, you know? But there's a global issue here, and that's the neighborhood issue. It's the relationship with the people that you're going to live close to and have interactions with. You don't want anybody egging your property next Halloween. Do you hear me? And likewise, those of you who have come here tonight to express your concerns, I encourage you to continue to have conversations with this man, who seems like a reasonable person to me, as do all of you people seem to be reasonable. And perhaps that kind of conversation and communication will lead to some positive results that will address at least some of your concerns. Public discourse these days, we don't communicate as well as we used to, it seems. So I am using this chair as a bully pulpit to try to get that conversation to continue. Don't walk out of here thinking that this is the end. It's not. It's just the beginning. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion before we go to vote? Does anybody want to make a, a motion to either accept or not accept the request of the petition to withdraw its request for zoning relief?
I move we accept the petitioner's request to withdraw based on the findings of the building commissioner.
And the opinion of legal counsel. Do I hear a second? Any final discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So this petition is, or this, uh, request for zoning relief is withdrawn, but your job now is just beginning, as is yours, the neighbors. Thank you. The next public hearing is the second of the two that were continued from the date of October 16th, Case Number 24-4A, the petitioner being David Mulcahy, DBA O'Dear, South Shore, P.O. Box 340, Kingston. The petitioner is requesting a variance pursuant to Section 5222 and Section 2230 of the Carver Zoning Bylaw for property located at 150... the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 157 North Main Street in Carver. Assessors map 24, lot 4A, to construct in addition to the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming residence in a highway commercial district, said addition for the purpose of an office and the storage of business materials. Now, before we begin on this tonight, I would like to provide the petitioner's legal counsel with a letter which came from town council very late this afternoon. I'm going to give him an opportunity to review this letter, so I ask that he approach. And we're going to take a five-minute suspension of these hearings so that Mr. Cirque has an opportunity to review this letter and get his thoughts together. So we will return, ladies and gentlemen, in the audience and at home in five minutes. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back in session. Who are we missing? Oh, we're missing Mr. Nowin, who we need.
He was back.
I guess he has taken a, a break. As we say, I think he's gone to see a man about a horse. So we'll wait for him to return. And I observe that Mr. Nowin is approaching and is ready to resume his seat.
Is Mr. Nowin going to be sitting on this case?
Well, we're going to inquire, Mr. Cirque. Mr. Nowin, have you had any involvement with this case from a conservation standpoint?
Yes. I've walked the property.
And has the conservation commission gone to vote on any of the issues that might be pertinent to this project? Well, if the, if the conservation commission has not, to the best of your recollection, gone to public vote on any issue pertinent to this project, then I don't have an issue with you sitting. But does, do you recall, Mr. Cirque, if you have had to go to the conservation commission already on this?
I believe an order of conditions is issued, but having said that, I have no problem with Mr. Nowin sitting on this case, just like I had no problem with him sitting on the prior case.
Oh, I do. It's been the policy of this board forever that anybody who has already rendered a vote on another committee of board on which they sit should not be rendering a vote on that same property that comes before us in this form. Even though the issues are different and although Mr. Nowin certainly doesn't have any actual conflict of interest, there's an appearance, perhaps, of a conflict of interest that would arise in the minds of some people. So out of an abundance of caution, and because Mr. Cirque has represented that an order of conditions has issued, which I understand requires a public vote, is that right, Mr. Nowin, that in order to issue an order of conditions, the conservation commission had to go to a vote?
Yes.
I would request a recusal on this matter.
That's good. As a matter of fact, I'll, yes, I'll recuse myself.
Thank you. But stay with us up here.
No, I was going to go sit. Well, I've got another obligation, which I can perhaps perform at this time.
Okay.
Okay, so long as you're back in...
Yeah.
Twenty minutes or so.
Mr. Chairman, is there an alternate for the Board of Appeals?
Well, there is an alternate, but not present tonight. So I'm going to give you the option, Mr. Cirque, because for those watching at home and in the audience, what occurs is when we're down to a four-member board, in order for a petition to be granted, the vote must be unanimous. All four of us must agree. However, if we have a full board of five, which in this case would include our new alternate, who will be coming on in a week, then a petition could prevail on a four-to-one vote. So I'm going to throw it in your lap now, Mr. Cirque, and inquire if you would like us to proceed this evening, or whether you would like to take a timeout and wait for our new alternate to be installed next week.
The latter.
Does anyone have an issue with that? The petitioner certainly has a right to a full board. I observe that there are a number of people here in the audience. Is anyone here tonight on this case?
157 North Main Street. No? Okay.
All right, so I don't feel so bad. We didn't inconvenience anybody except your client and you, a little bit longer than you would have already been inconvenienced at the first case.
It'll give me time to digest this, which I just got.
Yes, as did I. So do I hear a motion to continue the case to the date of November 5? That's when we next meet. It's only a week delay. Is that going to give you enough time, Mr. Cirque? Do you need to check your calendar?
Yeah.
Is Monday?
Yep.
And if that doesn't work, we'll give you a new date.
Do we have cases coming?
One new one.
No, I can do it.
Okay. So are you requesting this board continue the matter to November 5?
I am.
Okay. And I think each board member up here tonight has said that they have no issue with that, correct?
Correct.
So do I hear a motion to grant the petitioner's request to continue this case to November 5?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll see you back in a week.
So the selectman will be appointing this week?
I think he's already...
He is appointed.
Oh, he is appointed.
But he's just come back from vacation, like, within the last 24 hours.
Oh, okay.
And he's got to get sworn in.
Yeah.
And all this happened in the time period that he was away.
Great.
So you'll have a new person sitting in.
Who is it, by the way?
His name is Robert Burr, B-U-R-R.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Nice to see you both. Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Now we're back on time.
And now we're back on time, but sans Mr. Nowin, who has gone to parts unknown in this building. So I regret to say to all of you, as well as Area 58 again, that we'll take a very short break so we can locate Mr. Nowin, who I'm sure hasn't left the building. We'll corral him and bring him back. Thank you. Okay, we are back now in session with our five permanent members, all present and accounted for. We will commence public hearing, case number 37-1, at this time. The petitioner is Wendy Bullock of 8 Hughes Street in Plymouth. The petitioner is requesting a special permit pursuant to section 5300 and 2260-2263 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 6 Godfrey Circle in Carver, Mass., assessors map 37-lot 1, so as to increase an in-law apartment from 800 square feet to 1,000 square feet in a residential agricultural district. Is Wendy here tonight?
Yes.
Hello, Wendy.
Yes.
Come right over there. You're going to have your own seat, right at that table. I observe a man coming with a very large square.
Just in case.
And you've already introduced yourself to us, and who is this handsome guy?
The builder and her brother.
But how do you spell your last name?
Bullock, B-U-L-L-O-C-K.
Okay. And you are related to Wendy in some way?
Yes, she's my sister.
Very good. And the address of your business?
It's at 51 Graffam Road, Plymouth, Mass.
Okay. So as I read into the record...
Just, I noticed on the form here that there's a saving, "Do you own this property?" January 1st, and it was checked off no, and then said, "If no, who was owner?", and that's not filled in.
So perhaps you can address Mr. Nowin's question.
She closed on it...
Close on the land?
Yeah.
I don't know.
She purchased the land, and it was after the first of the year.
Well, who was the owner then?
Shoot, I don't have that one.
It's a form, but it has to be filled out.
Mr. Nowin makes a good point. The date of your application is September 4, 2018. And one of the questions, it appears as if you signed this, or Stephen signed this. I can't really read the...
I signed it.
Okay. And it asks, "Has application for a building permit been filed? No." "Has any previous appeal been made? Yes." If yes, what was the date conservation?
Right.
And did you own this property on January 1st? Which was Mr. Nowin's question, the answer is no. So did you close on this property sometime after the first of the year?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Nowin, does that help you answer that question?
Well, it still doesn't tell us who the owner was.
You mean the previous owner?
I will have to get that for you.
I don't, I don't remember who.
I don't have that paperwork with me.
Okay, because the next question says, "If no, who was the owner?", and that's left blank.
Well, I apologize that they didn't pick up on that downstairs.
Okay. All right. Mr. Nowin, again, was there any conservation involvement in this case?
I didn't see it. I wasn't there.
He was not on the board when we went in for the conservation.
And we're very happy to have Mr. Nowin back with us on this case. So tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do, Ms. Bullock, so that we have a better understanding as to the need for this increase that you're asking for.
So we're looking to build a house with an in-law attachment for my parents.
They're getting to the age where, not if, it's when they're going to be needing ADA compliances, whether it be the bathroom or doorways for a walker, or wheelchair, or... So in that, as you can see on the plans, that the 800 square feet really doesn't work in the favor of you start adding bigger doorways, bigger areas around beds for wheelchairs, et cetera. So it grew to make everything work to 1,000 square feet. And that's where we are today.
So this hasn't been built yet?
No, it's new construction. The whole house will be new construction.
Oh, the whole house?
The whole house, yes.
Oh, the whole house?
The whole house.
Bought a lot.
Bought the lot, yes.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, you said, "Just it's going to be for whom?"
My parents.
She's going to live in the main house, and my parents are going to live in the in-law.
Is this our mother and father?
Mother and father, yeah.
Mother and father.
Okay.
May I be so bold as to ask their ages?
Seventy and 68.
Do they have any physical handicaps now?
No, not at the moment.
Just advancing age, huh?
Correct.
Like all of us?
Yes. It's a matter of when. Could be tomorrow.
They're lucky to have...
Or yesterday. It just hasn't caught up with you yet.
Oh, they're lucky to have such supportive siblings or children.
So that's where we are today.
Can, can I just ask some questions about the plan?
Yep.
So I see bedroom one, bedroom two, but bedroom two, does that go to the main house?
Nope.
So are you, on these plans, you're not showing the second story?
There is, they're on, you go to the next page, A3 shows the second story for the main house. There is no second story on the in-law.
On the in-law.
Just one floor.
Thank you.
Going to have a kitchen in there? Yes.
So they, they come in the side door in here?
They can, yes, they can come up. There'll be, the steps aren't shown on the front porch. Come up the front porch and over into the, if you're looking at it to the right of the in-law, there's a door, or there's a, to the left of the in-law, there's also another door.
Are we looking at this, the whole in-law?
This here would be the in-law. So you can come up, enter here, or enter there, and then you also enter into the main house in this little corner.
Through this door here, right?
So this is your entrance.
So this is like a mudroom for both, both the apartment and the main house?
Nope, just for, just for the in-law. This is your mudroom for the main house.
So to get from their living room to the dining room area, you have to cross the foyer?
Yep, through the foyer of the in-law.
Right, and then over to your side, to her side, right?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
And in-laws typically have one bedroom. What's the second bedroom for?
There was a request that they wanted two bedrooms in their, in their in-law.
They wanted two bedrooms?
Yes.
What's the square footage of the second bedroom?
It is...
110 by 16.
130.
Roughly 10 by 13, yeah. So it's 130 square.
So if it did not have a second bedroom, you'd need less of a, of a...
It's really kind of the only way they want to do the in-laws, that they have, so they can, not necessarily it's going to be used as a bedroom, a TV room.
That's what the living room is for, right?
Yeah, but if they don't want to watch the same thing on the TV, they have another area to watch TV.
Do either of your parents work?
No.
No.
They're both retired?
Yes.
On social security?
Yes.
You seem like you didn't know the answer to that question.
It's not my, it's not my issue.
I don't expect my kids to know that answer either.
That's there.
I'm trying to get a handle on, on the second bedroom thing. You think they just want to use that as extra space?
I mean, if you want to get personal, my mother sleeps about two hours a night.
Yep.
And my father can't sleep, so there's the kind of the reason...
And I bet he snores too, right?
Ah, I haven't slept in the same room with him in years, so I don't know, but that's kind of the, the reason for the two bedrooms. My mother doesn't sleep much at night, so therefore, nine times out of 10, they sleep in separate bedrooms.
So the whole square footage is 952?
Yes.
Of the in-law, so it's 152 square feet over. And then a lot of, you're saying that to make this ADA compliant?
Correct. I mean, when you start adding three-foot doors and the bathroom big enough...
It's a big done plan.
Well, just looking at it normally, and there are some areas that you wouldn't be counting in, but 32 by 36, and that's rough, is 1,152, but there are some bump outs that you wouldn't count.
Where you...
So.
I have, I mean, I have to go with what the engineer put on the plan. You know, I, you have to go with what the engineer signed off on.
Oh, okay.
I, I just think you do.
Is it counting now?
I don't know.
Now, I heard you say to us that you're going to be living in the primary residence.
Yes.
Right? You don't have any plans on moving from that property anytime soon, do you?
No, this is going to be my forever home.
Okay, and again, these questions may seem a little bit too probing, but there's a checklist of items that we have to work through in this bylaw. It's about eight different things. And one of them is that we should make you understand that if you, and you are the owner currently, right?
Correct, yes.
Anyone else the owner, or just you?
Just me.
So if you ever leave that property, the special permit that we might grant for this in-law lapses immediately. So you have to stay there for this special permit to stay in force, just so that you understand.
I mean, that's, it's a, a big bathroom, but that's because...
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I had my elderly mother-in-law live with me. And what's PT1?
Pantry.
I couldn't come up with it. So that's extra square footage.
The bylaw also says that any new outside entrance to serve an accessory apartment shall be located on the side or in the rear of the building. You have it in the front right now, right?
Yep, you can make that change if needed.
Yeah, we have to, unless you're going to be looking for relief with regard to that particular provision... provision of the bylaw. But if that's an easy switch...
That's an easy switch. I mean, any sidewall, correct? So, instead of the door being on the right side where that window is on next to it, we can move the door over to that.
Do they drive still, your parents?
Yes.
Okay. And how many cars do they own?
One.
Is there space in your driveway to have them park off street?
There's a two-car, there's a two-car garage.
They're gonna have a parking spot in the garage.
Okay. Again, these are the kinds of questions that are by law.
Cause your garage is on the right.
That we ask. And if we should grant a special permit in this case, it's good for three years, at which time you come in and file an affidavit saying the circumstances haven't changed, and you're still there, and they're still there, and you still want the special permit, and then we grant an extension for another three years. So, these are renewable every three years. Okay. And you bring that affidavit or statement to the building commissioner. Don't come back before us.
Do you send out a letter?
No, you have to...
You're supposed to remember.
You got to remember that?
Diary it in your account.
It's just filing a letter with the town clerk.
With the building commissioner.
Is it?
Yep.
It's certifying that the occupants are still over 55.
And you can't do any additional construction unless you come back before us. For instance, if you wanna enlarge it for some reason, or alter it in some way.
Just the in-law.
Oh, just the in-law, yeah.
Yes.
Extended, enlarged, or altered is the language of the bylaw. So, if you're not messing with that side, then the only thing you have to do is come in, see the building commissioner in three years from the grant of the special permit, and get your extension. It's just an administrative thing. Do any board members have questions?
Is the basement under the in-law gonna be a walkout basement?
No, the grade doesn't allow it to be. We're gonna put some in for her, for her basement, we're gonna put some window wells in, so if she wants to at some point in time finish the basement, she has the capability of finishing it.
Okay.
Mr. Nowon, do you have anything further?
No.
Now again, Mr. Nowon raises an excellent point, which is that should we grant this tonight? Should we? I will move, or ask for a motion that your, the name and address of the previous owner is provided to us before the building permit can issue.
That's fine.
So, that's a, that shouldn't be any burden on you.
Nope.
But just wanna throw that out there again.
That's fine. You can go to the assessor's office and get that.
A copy of your dated suffice, or exactly go to the assessor's office.
Anybody else up here have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
Anybody from the public who is here, would they like to be heard on this petition? Okay. So, I guess we're at the point where if we have nothing further to ask...
I just, one or two questions.
Yes.
Are your parents local?
Yes.
Yeah, they live in Plymouth right now.
They live in Plymouth, and they're planning on moving in upon completion?
Correct.
Okay.
My parents and my sister are living, she sold her condo. They're all living together. They wanna get this in, we're all...
You better get this right for them, you know? The pressure is on. Do you have anything further?
No.
Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Every so often, we have to cross-reference amongst our bylaws. It's not necessarily one that's going to apply. So, there's a second one that I'm looking at now, and I just wanna ensure that the proposed construction fits in with the neighborhood character. You sat through that first case, so you know that there were concerns raised about whether the construction in that case was gonna be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Talk to me about what you plan to do in relation to how the other houses look in that neighborhood.
Kinda keep the same detail, same, she, I believe she has to go in front of the, there's a small committee. It's gotta be approved by the small committee, committee in her neighborhood.
Is there a homeowners association?
I don't know if it's so much of, if I had the deed with me, I, it would, but she had...
Is there approval?
There's a covenant, so that she has, correct.
Covenant, so there's approval by the builder, or what have you? I mean, I know the neighborhood and that house.
The house is definitely, I mean, if you've driven through that neighborhood, the house, the way it's designed is, was designed with houses in the neighborhood with detail.
What about your roof line on the proposed construction? Is that gonna be?
It's gonna fit in with this, with all the houses in the neighborhood.
What, no, what I mean specifically is the height of the primary residence roof line?
Yes.
Is that gonna be equal to, or...
It's gonna be, it's the...
Or higher or lower?
Is, is only one story. The house is two stories, so it's lower than the, the main house.
Okay.
It, if you were to look at it from the street, it's gonna look like the in-law is a, is a family room.
And your covenants don't preclude an in-law apartment?
Nope, nope. So, we can move that door to the side, that door to that side.
You know, that looks very nice. I think I'm gonna move in there.
I'll be in a discussion with my daughter.
Okay. So, we have closed the hearing. Had some additional discussion and Q and A. Do I hear a motion?
Is this a variance or a special permit?
Special permit.
Uh, I move that we grant the special permit for the square footage of the in-law apartment per the plans submitted.
Which would be how many square, additional square feet?
Hundred and fifty-two.
Now, you were looking for 200?
I just, I just made it easy that it was...
You could at 160?
Yeah. As it is per planned, it was, it was, I put on the paper, it was a thousand.
With the modifications that we've suggested.
But it's a little, it's like 30 square feet under 1,000.
So, what do you wanna do?
Um, per the plan submitted, and with the modifications suggested. You wanna move the door, right?
Yeah, we wanna move the door.
But that won't affect the square footage?
There's two doors that have to be moved to side location.
Either side or rear.
Yep.
And I would feel more comfortable with a actual number?
Well, the plan calls for 962.
One six, one what?
Well, 162 extra, or 962 total. 162 is over and above the...
All right, so you wanna say 165?
Sure.
165, good.
That's, that's fine.
Give you a little wiggle room?
Yep. However, however you need to put it, but it's gonna be built as per plan.
As per plan.
Of the plans that were dated as of... June 18th, 2008.
So, I need the board to make a motion with regard to the following. So, I'm just gonna leave this off, Shelby, and then I'm gonna ask one of the board members to make a motion to accept this. So, we're gonna enter first a finding into the record, and that finding that I'm suggesting be made part of the record is that we find that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. And that construction is not substantially more detrimental than any existing non-conforming structure in the neighborhood. Does anyone make, wanna make a motion with regard to these findings?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board has made these findings, and now I ask for a motion to grant the special permit that would allow construction of the proposed in-law up to 165 feet beyond what is allowed under the bylaw, with the condition that the entrance and exit for that proposed bylaw is either on the side or the rear of the building. Did I get all of that right?
Per the plans submitted.
And per the plans submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, you have been granted what you have asked for, but I do want to tell you that we need the name and address of the previous owner.
Where do I get that to?
You can bring that to the building commissioner.
Okay.
And ask him to make that part of the board file. So, they'll stick that in there. You don't have to speak to him. One of the nice ladies down there will gladly take it from you. You're gonna have to be going down there anyway to get your permit, so at the same time, just bring that information. They can make it part of the record.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to you and your parents.
Have a wonderful evening.
Yep. Okay. Next case is case number 49-53, the petitioner being David Taylor of 27 Leonard Street, Carver. It's David here tonight? Hi, David, how are you? Sorry you had to wait so long. The petitioner is requesting a variance pursuant to sections 2300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 27 Leonard Street. That's your property there?
Yes.
Where you live there? Uh, this is on assessors map 49, lot 53, to construct a freestanding 28 by 28 detached garage, garage in the side yard in a residential agricultural district. So, you have some toys, right?
No, just some cars.
Come on up. And who's this nice lady?
My girl.
Carol, nice to meet you.
Me too.
And I am buried in papers and plans up here, so if you'd just give me a moment, so I don't lose track of where I am. My wife says I'm always lost, so I guess that never changes.
Why did the building inspector send you to us?
Well, I believe it's because it's in the side yard. The garage, freestanding garage, I believe by the zoning board had to be behind the front of the house.
Okay, so it's because it's...
At least the way it's written, from what I understand.
Because it's in the front of the house?
It's ahead of the front of the house by whatever X amount of feet.
Okay, because you have distances.
Uh, well, the problem is that the way the, unfortunately, the plot doesn't show the landscape from the existing patio down into that drainage easement is really a, I mean, a downward slope. Everything had to drain into that easement. So, I really, you know, but because the existing patio is there, we wouldn't wanna... That's one of the reasons, it just doesn't fit necessarily with the slope of the land. It has to, we'd have to refill in half of that easement area to make that fit there. And it, I mean, the driveways there, it just kinda fits into the driveway scheme. We would've made the driveway connect it to the garage, so it would be like a T once it's done. We, maybe work backwards on this. You know, we've been at the house 26 years, so then we figured, well, let's put a deck on, let's put a sunroom on, let's do the hardscape, so we did all the patio. And then, I guess what we're missing was the garage, you know? Maybe we should've done that.
Now, let's get the snow off the cars? Is that what it is?
I'm sorry?
Now, let's get the snow off the cars?
Well, that's the biggest reason. I tell you, to be honest with you, that we said, you know, we've been there 26 years, as I said, and we finally made a decision, we're gonna stay there now. You know, not knowing how things go, we kicked around, our kids are local, and wanna stay here, grandkids now, so we're, we're gonna like stay put, and snow is a tough, tough sell for us, and when it takes me longer to clean the cars off than it does the driveway. So, that's a big reason.
What specific relief does the petitioner need?
You, you need it because it's being placed in the front of the house.
Side. Yeah, I think I have the frontage, there might be, the way the zoning was written, it has side frontage and, and back frontage, so I thought I met all those. The 32 feet from the front might be a little short. It might be 50.
I think you need 50. So, so, but a detached garage only has to be 10 feet from the side lot, but you have a triangle, you have a triangle-shaped lot, so, so now we have to, when we have a triangle, triangular-shaped lot, we have to kinda figure out...
Where the front and the side is.
You don't have a side yard, you must have a front yard, so, okay, now I got it.
And the front is usually the part that faces the street?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. And that's where the driveway, the driveway comes onto Leonard Street, and that's the front of our house.
And are the doors to the garage gonna be facing the existing driveway?
They'd face, they'd face the driveway. Yeah, they'd face the driveway. So, we, you know, you back your drive in and... And we didn't wanna put it all the way back, make the swing out of the driveway. You wanted probably a spot for a car if somebody visited without blocking a garage, so I mean, it, it's hard to see from a two-dimensional view, but, but if you're there in the house and you said, where would you put the garage? Right there. That's where that shows to, to live without taking everything else down.
And do you know what the distance is from the corner of the garage to the, to the easement area?
No.
Spitball it?
1 inch 20, it's about 30 feet.
What 30 feet sound like?
It's, it's probably, yeah.
Even gonna ruin?
Yeah, 20.
Any, anything past that, where that easement starts, and closer actually to the house the grade starts. In that back corner, the grade actually starts, and everything pitches down.
Measure that, and see if it's to scale right now.
The garage from the edge of the easement, there's, there's the easement line, that dash line.
About 18 feet.
About 18 feet.
Well, they're doing their mathematical calculations, and I was terrible in math, that's why I went to law school. I wanna ask you, is there any way that we can configure this garage on the lot so that you don't need the zoning relief that the dimensional bylaw says that you do in this town?
The 1,000 square feet? I could easily go 24 by 28.
Well, part of the, part of the issue that you have here is that it's in front of the house.
Okay.
Right? Is there any way that we can move that back, so that it's no longer in part, in front of the house?
I guess it would just take everything that, you know, we have, I mean, the backyard there is, is irrig, not that you can't move irrigation, I guess, and just, again, the way the pitch of that yard is, we didn't really wanna fill in, it would be closer to the drainage easement if we put it next to the patio.
You can't go closer to the drainage easement.
Because you've got, let me explain to you why I'm, I'm going in this direction. You're asking us for a variance.
Correct.
For variances. And under Massachusetts law, in order for us to grant you a variance, this is different than the special permit discussions that you've heard earlier this evening. Under Massachusetts law, we have to show one or more of three different factors that are unique to your property, that give us legal cover to grant you the relief that you're requesting. In other words, you're asking us to break the law, to break the bylaw, and make an exception for you. And the three exceptions are the shape of the lot, the topography of the lot, or the soil of the lot. So, let's work through this. Is there anything unusual about the soil of the lot that requires that the garage be sited where you have it on the plan? Yes or no?
I, I, I guess I could fall back into the easement, but I don't know if that fits, you have to...
That, that doesn't relate to soil. Is there any septic or water issues over there?
That's on the other side of the driveway and then in the backyard. So, all this, this side of the...
And that question is no, right?
Well...
What about topography?
Topography's big, because the, because the slant starts at the patio going into that easement. Even though the easement is twenty feet behind my patio, I actually have that corner staked out in my backyard just so I don't build or, because theoretically enough with the builder change that grade at all. Uh, I mean, at least that's what I was hoping.
So you're saying it needs to be sighted where it's sighted on this plan because of the topography of your lot?
I would say so, yes.
And the third reason would be for the, because of the shape of the lot. Anything unusual about the shape of the lot that requires the garage to be sighted where you have it on the plan?
I, I think the shape of the lot is also dictated by the easement. I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit limited on where I can put it, but that's probably goes back into the topography. I mean, I have this section over here, but I didn't want to put the garage that far away on the other side of the easement. It, um, if, if that was my property...
You mean the back point, the point to the triangle going back away from Leonard Street?
I think he's talking about over here. Where it says... That's the area to the left.
No, I think he's talking about, you're talking about him back or to the side?
Either way. I mean, if, well, I couldn't go, I couldn't go back of the house because that really is topography, and I really do think it would affect into the easement. I mean, it just gets real, real close to that easement. And secondly, with the shape being the way, I wouldn't put, only the shape and the fact that my easement is, cuts up my property, if, if that's what...
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're making both a topography and a shape argument to us.
I think so.
Which are two of the three exceptions under the law that would give us legal cover, as I said, to grant this relief that you're requesting. Is that what you're telling us tonight?
Is the drainage easement actually a retention pond of some kind?
Well, it, I mean, in twenty-five years, I've seen it fill up.
I mean, does it, does it start sloping down?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a huge...
I mean, I know that section of Leonard Street's kind of hilly, so your section is...
We have a hole. That's a pretty big hole back there. I mean, the trees grow out of it, so it kind of mix, mixes in with the white pines and the like.
It's a wooded area.
Um, but the drainage easement from the street empties there. The culvert empties at the bottom of...
Oh, okay. That's where the culvert, oh, okay.
Almost near where the eighty, eighty-five is, coming off that street, right down through that little road, roadway.
I mean, to put it on the, let's say, for argument's sake, to put it on the other side of the house, I mean, that's a more non-conforming, because now you're, you're... On top of the lot line. You're on top of the lot line. Um, and...
So they'd need a side variance.
They, they would need a severe, severe side variance. Um, and to move it, I know the topography and the restrictions on an easement, you can't build on it, you can't...
Fill it in or...
You're, you're subject to it and you're encumbered by it, um, permanently.
You're encumbered by it. You can do some things with easements.
Okay.
But, yeah, I...
It's at your own risk.
I, well, sometimes. So I, I get what you're saying. Shape and topography is your argument to us.
Yes.
I'd like to, how far is the back of the garage from where the land, where it's sighted now, from where the land really be, you know, begins to slope up?
Uh, where, where the corner is where the arrows, uh, points to that?
Where you have the eighty-five point, too.
Okay. Um, it's, it's flat. We could probably move it back, I, I don't know, potentially. It, it definitely slopes at the beginning of that easement, at where the lines cross, where the easement horizontal crosses with the eighty-five line.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, there's existing, there's existing, uh, gardens there, plants there, not that that can't be dug up, but, and, and irrigation, so that's part of what the...
So you're looking for about an eighteen-foot frontage? Relief. Relief. Variance. Relief, variance.
From the road.
From the road.
Not exactly following.
Because, well, I think you have to be at least fifty feet off the wall. He needs thirty, but he needs fifty from the front. And I think because of the shape of the lot, the building inspector can't find a side lumber, so he's calling the, the front, so it should be fifty from the front. So he needs fifteen.
So that's where eighteen is coming from.
How many feet is it now?
It...
Based on the sighting?
Based on the sighting, he would need eighteen feet of variance to put it there.
And he also needs a variance to, uh, because it's in front of the...
Because it'll be in front of the house.
Right. Right, how many feet? Can you calculate that for me?
But it makes this here. This is the front of the house, so it's gotta be anywhere here. You can put it back here, but then that cuts it...
I would say it's gonna be in front of the house on my estimate.
This is the step.
By about twelve feet.
Eric, you on it?
Yeah.
But what's the actual bylaw on that?
You mean the, uh, the number?
Yeah, the, the twenty-three-hundred is just for dimensionals.
Probably like twenty-four feet.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five feet.
Twenty-four, twenty-five feet, what?
In front of the house. But you can't move it back that far because by then he's on top of the easement area and then the s...
It's because of the setback from the easement as well.
Yeah. Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
What's the setback from the easement?
Jim, do you have any insight on the drainage?
No, I, no, I...
How many feet now from that corner to where the drainage easement begins?
About twenty-two, along the road, or what do you mean? About twenty-two feet?
Twenty-two feet.
Yeah, I would say it's probably twenty feet.
Twenty feet. And they, and we said they need twenty-four?
Yes, about twenty-four.
So what if we were to move the proposed garage back some, so that the dimensional relief that you're requesting would not be as great?
From the frontage? Is that what you mean, that?
Yeah, from the, from the, uh, where it's sighted now, it's clearly in front of the house.
Correct.
So if we move the garage back closer to the existing drain, drainage easement, without invading it, you'll need less relief. That's one of the things that the board struggles with all the time. People come in and they, and we try to assess these plans and figure out if there's another way where we can make the relief that you're requesting less of, uh, an insult to the existing bylaw.
Sure.
So I'll give you a minute to think about that one. Because you're gonna need two, two areas of relief. Frontage and, uh, the one on frontage from Leonard Street.
Frontage from Leonard Street and front of the house.
And in front of the house.
And back of the street, correct.
Yes, yes. And if you do move it back, that will help you on both bylaw requests, right? Because it'll increase your frontage from, uh, Leonard Street. It will also move the house back, or the garage back from the house. So it's, you know...
And there's not, but did you mention there's actually a front, uh, a distance from the easement that I...
I believe there's a setback from the easement.
Ten feet or so. Ten feet.
Oh, ten feet.
Yeah.
So that has to be ten feet ahead of that eighty-five line, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that would be good, because that would leave you room also to move around the garage without going down the hill into the...
Yeah. It, it, that hill starts, but it isn't, you know, I, I just didn't want to put any fill there.
Jim makes a good point. I'm not suggesting that we abut the drainage easement.
Right.
But, you know, if we can move it back a little, we also help you out on the frontage, uh, dimensional relief that you need.
Correct.
Maybe ten feet additional setback from Leonard Street.
So you could put the, I mean, this is the size of the garage.
Mr. Taylor, do you have a builder yet?
Oh, I, we've talked to a builder, yeah, who, who, um, kind of gave us some, we talked about the plans, and we don't have anything officially drawn up, but that's where the twenty-eight by twenty-eight came from.
And did he stake it out or...
Yeah, we staked it out when the, when the, uh, engineers came.
You know, I'm not comfortable doing a, like, a table of telling him to move it back without input from his engineer saying, "If, if we move it, okay, if we move it back ten feet because we granted him the variance..."
Yeah.
"...tonight for ten feet." You know, he's talking about slopes and we're talking about a really big easement on his property. Um, and unless we want to do a site visit and get input from his engineer, I don't feel we can, can suggest that he moves it back.
If, if you saw the property, not that I'm asking you to do a site visit, you would say that's where the garage should go. And that's based on the easement, the slope, the topography, and I get lay of the land.
Well, like you suggested, putting in fill, you know, if you move it back, you're gonna have to fill in areas and...
And, and that's gonna encroach on the easement. I mean, hopefully, what the builder said was everything he took out of there would just be, you know, would be dispersed around it for the foundation, so...
So how would the vice chair like to proceed?
I'd like to proceed with the plan that he has. I think he's impacted wholly by the shape of his lot, unless we want to go out and see it, but his testimony to the slate, shape of a slope. I'm familiar with that area. Um, and a, a really big drainage easement that's taking up a good fifth or sixth of his property. Um, and you can't impact those that, that much. If you start...
How about moving the garage back a little bit?
And Webby's done a lot of work in Pennsylvania.
Yeah. But I, I'd like to look at the land and see where the slope is if it came back even six feet. You know, if, if there's, if there's fifteen, twenty feet here and fourteen of it is flat, before it gets to the drainage easement and it starts sloping down. If fourteen of it's flat and it gets to the drainage easement, take away ten right there, because you have to have, I would suggest ten feet clearance easily, um, from a dr- from any kind of drainage easement. Is your easement, do you know where that easement boundary is?
I've had it all staked out.
I'd like to go look at it.
Well, it's been our practice since I've been chair of this, uh, board, that if one member wants to do a site visit and get their exercise, then, uh, the rest of us typically go along with that. Now, can you tell me when you're planning on commencing construction, should you get the relief you require?
Um, we're not sure if we would actually start this fall or in the spring. It would be up to the...
All right, so there's no urgency to this. So I ask the board members now to check their respective schedules and see when we can do a, a quick site visit.
I think we should try and get it done so we can have him back on the fifth.
That'd be fine.
That would have to be this weekend, then.
That's fine.
And, uh, how does, uh, Saturday morning look for people?
I'm good.
Like, how early?
How early do we normally go?
Nine o'clock.
Eight-thirty, nine, nine.
Eric?
I'm good.
Jim?
I think so, at this point.
I'll actually put it in my calendar. So if you have it staked out, we can just come in and see the...
Sure.
And then...
That'll be Saturday morning.
Saturday morning. At what time did you say? Nine?
Eric is still checking.
I'm good.
Okay, so Saturday, which would be the third of November, I believe. At nine o'clock, and, uh, we will all come out, take a quick view. Promise we won't stay too long or bother you.
I just, you know, I'll be anxious to see which way you would plan on, you know, give, moving that garage a little bit. And if it's a few feet, that's certainly fine. The other thing that comes into play, you'll see how the driveway, at the end of the driveway, we really didn't want to put the garage beyond the end of the driveway. We'd never be able to get into the driveway. So the further back you go, the further back you're kind of getting one of the two vehicles away from the driveway.
It, it looks like you may want to do, what, a little turn on the driveway to get the garage?
Correct, yes. But, but I guess it depends on, I don't know how, without my little box, I don't know how many feet that is. If that just moves back, you know, six or eight feet or...
Okay.
That's the only question. But I'd be happy to watch.
So I'm gonna ask for the, uh, for a motion from a member of the board to continue this hearing until November fifth, which would be this coming Monday.
Okay.
And on the third at nine AM, we'll do the site visit.
Very good.
So we will have, uh, one, two, three cases anyway on the fifth. So, um, it might take us a little bit of time to get to you, but we promise we'll, we'll try to move things along, okay? So, uh, do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to the date of November fifth with a site visit on the third at nine?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we will see you back here on Monday. And again, thanks for being patient.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
We have yet another case this evening. And that is public hearing case number eight dash twenty-six. The petitioners are being Clark A. Griffith, trustee, and Suzanne R. Lyons, trustee, tail box one twenty-seven South Carver. The petitioners are requesting a special permit pursuant to section five-three-hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at seven Lakeview Street in Carver, which is at assessors map eight, lot twenty-six F, to modify the use of the existing home office established for the purpose of harvesting and billing an office for rent in a residential agricultural district. So a process of elimination. I know this must be your case, so I invite you both to come up. And I observe from your application, uh, again, that you're looking to establish a business office rather than a home office. The home office, you say, was established in the year twenty-ten, as written on your application dated September sixth and signed by you and Ms. Lyons. So perhaps one of you could speak a little bit to us about what you'd like to do and why you'd like to do it?
Sure. My name is Aaron Burke. I'm the attorney for the petitioner, and...
What's your business address, Mr. Burke?
Uh, it is one Lakeville Business Park Drive, Suite Two D. That's in Lakeville, zero-two-three-four-seven.
Nice to see you.
The building is currently, um, not being utilized by Mr. Griffith, and he thought it would be, uh, good to rent it for purposes of, of getting income to, to support the property. The idea is that, um, he would ask for modification of the existing special permit under section two-two-five-two of your bylaw, and, um, would of course understand that, that you would put time, place, manner, restrictions as needed on, on such a business so there would not be substantially more detrimental to, to the existing neighborhood.
Is there a existing special permit issued by the zoning board or...
There is. Uh, there was a, a special permit granted in two thousand and ten for the purposes of a home office.
And was that by the planning board or the zoning board?
Or by the building commissioner, because I have a letter here dated July twenty-two thousand and ten, which I'll pass out to board members in a minute if they don't already have it. I observed the vice chair has it. Um, this is a letter directed to you, Mr. Griffith, from the then-building commissioner, saying that he's, uh, advising you that, uh, he has reviewed your application. He has, Mr. Mendoza, and he's happy to inform you that it has been approved. Now, that strikes me as implying that it was a building commissioner review rather than a review from any of the, uh, boards, either planning or zoning. So...
And that may be the case. And I, I have a copy of that letter right here, and, and that seems to be that if, if there's a home...
So you would need a special permit rather than an, a, an amendment of an existing one?
Correct. Is, is that your recollection of, of how this happened? Do you recall whether they granted a home office, or did you have to come in front of the zoning board for...
No, I did not. I have to come before the zoning board.
Okay.
It had been my, my office for, I think, excessive fifteen years.
I don't remember you, Mr. Griffith. And I don't think my vice chair recalls you either.
Neither.
You were here then.
It could have been...
And James was here. Do you remember him coming before us, Mr. Powell?
I wasn't here then, no, Mr. Griffith's not. But I definitely am aware of his presence and activities in Carver.
It, it could have been issued as a break because we do have home office as a break.
Twenty-two forty-one. My mistake. I, I was under the impression that he had been here based on talking with Suzanne, but he's clarified that, that it wasn't a special permit.
Okay. As a break. And he's coming here under...
So you're not gonna be using this anymore for a home office. You're gonna be using, you're gonna be renting it for income purposes. That's what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's correct. My Griffith Cranberry Company is dying.
You what?
My Griffith Cranberry Company is on its demise.
There are a lot of cranberry growers who are having trouble now.
Yeah, but we have the facilities that we would have no need for, so we thought the best, the highest use for it would be to provide this place for somebody else, you know.
Okay, so this really doesn't fall under the home, uh, occupation bylaw, because that, the, the facts of this case do not fit within the purview of twenty-two forty-one. the, the facts of this case do not fit within the purview of twenty-two forty-one.
Is this a separate building?
Yes.
Freestanding.
Separate, freestanding building. Is it near your home?
No.
On Lakeview Street?
It's on Lakeview Street, but it's, uh, two, two houses away from my home.
It's two houses away? So th- this is the only thing that occupies that lot?
That's correct.
Is this little office building? You don't have a picture of it, do you?
No, I do not.
How many square feet is it? How many square feet is it?
Sixteen wide by about twelve feet deep, roughly. It's a very small building, really.
Was that, uh? Maybe, maybe four hundred.
Yeah, I would say.
It's basically two rooms with a half bath.
Two rooms with a?
Half bathroom. It's, uh, two small rooms.
Is it ADA compliant?
No.
I mean, by, twenty by twenty-four, something like that.
And you spoke with the building commissioner, and this is what he said?
Yeah, I believe, uh, Suzanne Lyons had spoken with the building department, and they recommended, uh, coming in front of the ZBA.
When it was used before, it was for Mr. Griffin's Cranberry Company, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So is this allowed within the, uh, district?
This is what I'm checking. Because cranberry use on buildings separately, sitting on Cranberry Boggs area, is usually exempt from zoning.
This is a residential agricultural district. He now wants to rent.
But it's a freestanding building, and it's the only thing on that lot. There's no home there. There's no, it's, and it's, and do you have a tenant in mind?
They, no, they've, they've talked with some folks, but there's nobody in particular that they have in mind at this time for renting to.
This is problematic.
Oh, Ms. Clark has just said that she finds this problematic, so I'm going to ask her to-
Explain.
-educate the rest of the board members, since she has taken possession of my book.
I'm looking in the regulation table, not the bylaw that was cited. The bylaw that was cited is talking about a home occupancy, a home business that is to be converted to a commercial establishment, is what Mr. Griffin is, is asking. This is a, a building that sits by itself in a residential agricultural. It's not, I mean, it's on its own lot. Um, he was allowed to run, as a right, he was allowed to run his cranberry office out of there because cranberry business and agricultural is very friendly in this town. And in order to run a cranberry office on Cranberry Boggs by a cranberry owner doesn't require any relief from anybody. You need a letter from the building commissioner. Now, in order to run a commercial, basically a commercial establishment out of this, so that you rent it and you don't have a tenant in mind, so we don't know whether it's a craftsman or somebody, um, who's going to just run an office.
Well, yeah, we would, we would understand that it should be restricted to an office use. I mean, he doesn't intend on renting to anybody that would do any sort of, uh, craft work or, or-
No craftsman works.
Makes him do that.
But what I'm saying is that if you go to our regulation table-
Yep.
Under residential agriculture, most of these functions are not allowed. Um, so like retail salesman, or, or retail sales, if somebody wanted to open up their own little craft store and sell, that's not allowed. Um, I'm trying to find where it fits, and there's, these are commercial, and then you go into the RA, so a bed and breakfast, print shop, no, no. I don't know what essential services are. Service, no, no, no. You can have a kennel.
Landscaping, nursery?
Boy, I got somebody for, um, a tattoo parlor, no.
How about a tattoo parlor in there?
No, that's no.
Side parlor?
That's probably no.
That's the residential, if we're saying this is gonna-
But that's just the principal use. So the principal use is-
Well, what would you call a billing office? Because that's what it sounds like you wanna rent it to, someone to use it for-
As office space, right?
As office.
Have a phone there, um, maybe do billing, do, um-
See customers.
Correct. There's, there's, uh, a space behind the building that, that would be adequate for four to five parking spaces. It's off-street and, you know, that, that's really the, the thought, uh, in mind.
So let's find, let's find out.
Well, the, the issue that I, that we're having is we don't know what is gonna go in there. And we need to fit it into one of these categories that's allowed in this district, because-
Right, and, and-
In my opinion, we're not allowed to grant use variances in this town. Uh, not only because our bylaws prohibit it, but also chapter forty-eight prohibits it.
Right, and, and I was coming at this from the perspective that a special permit had been granted, not understanding that it hadn't. So that's when I saw, um, two-two-five-two with the non-conforming uses, the idea that the board has the authority to change a non-conforming use in accordance with that section if it determines that change doesn't, isn't more, uh, is not substantially more detrimental. So that was the angle I was taking with it, but now that I understand that there wasn't a-
But it, it's not a non-conforming use.
Right, now I understand that. And that was my understanding after talking with Suzanne, but, um, you know, it, it appears that the home office had been granted by the building commissioner for, without a special permit from this board.
That's what the letter seems to imply. It says, "I reviewed it," uh, in the letter. So, you know, let me sort of let you know where my head is at on this. And this, I'm just speaking for myself, because these folks all have loud voices of their own. I think you need to do a little research to make sure that we're, you and I and everybody else here is interpreting that letter correctly, and no previous special permit has been issued. Okay, and if you find that it hasn't been issued, then my thought is that we're gonna need to know what you're planning on putting in there so that we can fit it in, if possible, uh, under one of the uses that's permitted in this particular zone. But otherwise, what you're gonna be asking for, it seems to me, is a use variance or a, a permit that would be based on a use that's not expressly permitted under either the town bylaw or under chapter forty-eight. Does everybody understand that?
Did you speak with, uh, excuse me, uh, Stephen Cole, our town planner, at all?
No.
No. Um, speak with him. And explain, explain the, um, the issue. Uh, because, again, it's because it's a, a freestanding building that is in a residential agricultural, um, area or district. And because Mr. Griffin was using it for cranberry, um, his commercial cranberry building, there was no issue as, as far as him using it as an office.
Right.
The fact that it sits on its own lot, um, and you wanna convert this to a kind of an open-ended commercial building, that becomes a little problematic, and that may be a call to the planning board as well. So you're, to, to get in touch with, Mr. Cole would, would guide you. I think what we should do is continue this hearing, um, until they find, you, you need a little more information.
Sure, I agree, and I appreciate the, um, the direction you've provided.
So the, so the question would be what's on the regulation table for what Mr. Griffin wants to do? And then speak definitely with Mr. Cole.
Right.
For me, it's all about use, and whether that use can be fit into the regulation table.
He may, he may give you some guidance about some very specific businesses that you might have to, um, investigate um, as far, and be limited to those only.
And you're gonna see what those are anyway, by reference to the use table.
Right.
Right, right.
Just run your finger down the page. Yes, no, yes, no. So you're gonna, you're gonna be able to educate yourself, I think, pretty easily in terms of what it is that's allowed and what isn't.
Right.
So, Mr. Griffith, we're not trying to give you a hard time here. We wanna make sure that we do, uh, we take action that's in accordance with the town's laws. That's why we're here. And if there's some way that we can assist you in your goals with the assistance of your very able legal counsel, then we will do our utmost to, uh, to do that for you. All right?
I understand, yeah.
Great.
I, I would suggest, I don't know, um, I'm sorry, counsel, I didn't catch your name?
It's, uh, Aaron Burke.
Aaron Burke. Um, if, I don't know whether you'll have time to be able to be before us again by next Monday. Um, I'd like to give him the opportunity to get that information. If you don't, we can continue it to a later date. Um, so my recommendation at this point would be to can, make a motion to continue the hearing until November fifth or such time as you get your information. Is that good with the board?
No, I think we need to hear from counsel as to how much time he needs, because I'm sure he's busy.
Yes, I, I think that, that should be adequate, um, and if it isn't, I can, I can let, um-
I, I wanna give you the opportu- if, if, you know, things should open up and-
Right.
Be able to get something done this week, I wanna have, give you the opportunity to come back before us on Monday, because we are coming back for other hearings. Um, other than that, we wouldn't be meeting probably until the first of December, I don't think.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'll do my best to be prepared for, for the fifth and, and the event that I can't-
If you, if you can't, just send, send a letter requesting a continuance to our next available date.
Right, okay.
And, and you will no doubt be, uh, better prepared, uh, the next time around. Not that you weren't prepared this time, but-
Right.
You'll have more information.
I was looking at it from a different perspective that wasn't necessarily, uh-
Right, and, and that's not a criticism. We all-
Yep.
We all have those moments where we are sort of caught, and we need to take a timeout and reassess. But I, I would say to you that if we're correct in our suspicion that there was no previous special permit issued, my feeling is, is that we're gonna need to know what it is that Mr. Griffith is intending to put into that space.
Right.
Otherwise, we've got no way to fit it into the use table. So although you may have done the research that you need to do by the fifth, you may not be able to tell us by the fifth what's, what you're planning on putting in there. So i- if you're not able to do that, then you should probably send a letter saying, okay, I found out that there was no special permit issued, but we don't know yet what's going to go in there, because we haven't advertised yet or had an agreement with, with someone to rent it. So if you need more time, then we're happy to grant another continuance that would push it further down the road.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we're doing what we can.
We certainly can provide information. They've been through preliminary discussions with a real estate agent. She's, she's off the wall with, uh, suggestions on people that she could put in there. And, uh, and it, uh, it seems to be a natural progression since it was my office. We're not bringing in the dancing girls or anything. It's still simply gonna be an office. And that was a, that was, I guess, a preliminary discussion with a billing inspector that we were simply, still gonna be an office, but it would not be a-
Again, what I, what I, what I need to see-
Right, it's gotta be a, probably a specific kind of office, and it's gotta fit into our-
We dealt with employee issues and things like that, and, and cranberry dealing, but nothing else.
Okay.
Great. So do I hear a motion to continue to the date of November five?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We're supposed to jump.
All right.
And counsel, again, if you're not ready by the fifth, you can just send us a letter saying, yeah, you know, we found out that there was no special permit, but we don't know yet what's going in there. So can you kick it down the road for us?
Yep.
And that can be handled administratively.
Great.
All right, the, the two of you don't need to come back for that. We'll just push it out a couple of months.
Yep.
Okay?
You probably wanna get a copy of the zoning regulations.
Yeah.
You know, that-
Yes, no, I have a copy. I've seen the use table, so I'm familiar with what you're describing and-
Okay, 'cause the, the, the primary use is now gonna be commercial, so you have to look under the RA in commercial.
Yeah, he knows what to do. Great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And thank you for being patient.
No, I appreciate the opportunity.
Been a long night.
Thanks.
Suzanne, I'd love to be here. Unfortunately, she's gone off to Miami.
Well, that's not so unfortunate for her, is it? Tell her that we send her our regards.
I will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Good night, Mr. Griffin.
And thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any business before the board this evening? Anybody bring pizza?
No, but it would have been a good idea.
It would have been. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Town of Carver.